I am Amy Glassmeyer. I am the current planning board chairperson. We have a quorum according to our town planner. And so we will begin our meeting. Let me say that I am being assisted and supported by Laura Lynn, the town planner, as well as Jen Oram, who is the assistant with the assistant director of planning permits and inspections. And we have a couple of things to say about how the meeting will proceed. First, to begin with, Lauren will guide us through the meeting, and that means that she's going to tee up issues and make recommendations so that she can guide us through the work that we need to do. In some instances, we're going to have meetings where people are coming and asking for or have made applications before us and seeking some type of approval. In other instances, we'll be doing business of the town related to land use, site development, and residential construction. The order of actions will be introduction of the issues before the board. And in instances where we need to render a decision or approval, we will make that determination at the time. The planning board members will be expected to discuss issues, and they will be asked in alpha order to begin with Clark Brewer, then Tom Callahan, Paul Colerie, Paul Grady, and Eric Potter. At the end of that type of discussion, the chair will make final comments. The public will then be asked if there are questions and comments. We ask them if they wish to speak to let us know in advance and to state their name and address prior to their making a comment. They begin with five minutes of commentary before the board. Any back and forth that needs to occur will be between the chair of the planning board and the respective individual wishing to speak. And they will not debate issues at that moment. And we, but we will also recommend in some instances that we will return to an issue that we are debating. So tonight, we will basically follow that plan. With that said, I'd like to ask Lauren to introduce the agenda and indicate the order of business.
Excuse me, just a quick question. Were you going through the procedures for a special permit site plan review?
No, I was basically going through how I thought it would be that we would run the meetings.
Run the meetings tonight?
Run the meetings in general.
Okay, all right, sounds like you were you were queuing up for for site plan.
No, I was just simply discussing a practice that I would like to see us undertake so that it gets a little bit easier, particularly because we're going to be dealing with issues where there could be a lot of back and forth, and I'd like to have a systematic approach to that.
Well, you've covered the outline perfectly. It's unfortunately, it's probably something that has to be repeated at the beginning of every public hearing and probably another time in the middle. So when when you have a large public hearing that there's lots of people at, you just need to constantly remind everybody of what the what those ground rules are, but you outlined them perfectly.
Great, thank you very much. With no further ado, Lauren, would you proceed?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The first item of business is the Master Plan Implementation Committee presentation to the planning board. I will be sharing a presentation with you. Katie Dugan is here with us. She's the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we also have Jen Boylan, who's a member at large on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And without further ado, I'll let Katie begin, and I will get the screen share so that we can have that presentation. And Katie, you can just let me know when you would like to advance the slides.
She's muted. Whoops, I'm back, sorry. Thank you for making the time tonight. I appreciate that we're first on the agenda, and you've given us a little bit of time so that we can hopefully have a good discussion. On the call with me tonight is Jen Boylan. I know that Tim Davis is also trying to log on, who is a member. So just as a start, we sent to you as part of your packets as a pre-read, a series of documents that really outlined a little bit about the master plan process, which obviously, being planning board members, you're familiar with, but also the charge of the Master Plan Implementation Committee that was put together by the Board of Selectmen and then constituted as of January of this year. So I just wanted to thank the whole Master Plan Implementation Committee for their work. It really has been a team effort. We've had Amy Glassmeyer, who has been the planning board liaison. We had Kevin McCarthy with us through most of June as the liaison for the Board of Selectmen. Tim Davis from Harbor, Tom Callahan as the open space and rec member or liaison, Karen Bailey-François as the citizen at large, Jennifer Boylan as a citizen large, myself as a citizen at large, along with the help of Lauren Lind as we put this together. So we had seven committee meetings from January to July, with a number of working group meetings in between to really gather data from various town committees on implementation priorities. And the goal was really to try and distill, as we laid out in one of the pre-read documents, there are 36 goals and 140 strategies in the master plan. So obviously, we're not going to tackle all of that at once. And so the goal for tonight's conversation was to really lay out a series of initial implementation recommendations for the planning board to get a understanding of where we think the implementation process should start. With that, Lauren, I will ask you to move to slide two, which is really the table of contents. So tonight, I'm not going to spend too long on the master plan process because obviously, we put this deck together also for the select board. We presented to last night. You guys are much more intimately aware of the planning, master plan process. I did want to talk quickly about the year one goals that we set for ourselves. And then I'd like to spend the bulk of the conversation really around the initial implementation recommendations. And we've come up with a series of top five recommendations that we have. And then I'd like to close the conversation tonight with really laying out how do we think about the medium and long term objectives for implementation? Because as you know, this is a process that will take us for close to a decade if we do it well in terms of working through all of the recommendations in the broader master plan and some of the attenuate plans that feed into it. And then we wanted to talk a little bit about what does success look like so that we all have a shared vision of where are we going over the long road? And then at the end, really pause and talk through next steps and how we can partner with the planning board around the implementation process. And I really, at that point, like to have a frank conversation around what do you think about the recommendations? And if you agree, where are the partnership opportunities are that we can really work together on? So with that, I'm going to have Lauren move us to slide three, which is what we did was we kind of broke down the master plan process into three steps. As you're very aware, step number one was the visioning process. And that took place in 2016. It had the help with the help of MABC, we had the townwide survey, and then there was a public forum also in March 2016 that culminated in a report. In addition to that, the MABC put together four slides that I really continue to use as a touchstone to kind of summarize what the community thought at the time were the priorities. And it was the strengths, the challenges, and a priority ranking slide, and the slide that you're looking at right now, which really articulated in 2016, so four years ago, what the community felt the priorities were. And I find it really interesting that some of the themes that come out really still resonate. And I think that's a good thing in that not only are the opportunities still there, I think that the the voice of the community really hasn't changed. And I'll just highlight a couple, and you guys can read it. But I would highlight under land use and town character, the first bullet, which is really come up with a plan before the town is overdeveloped, enhance the village district, improve aesthetics along Route 3A. There are statements at the bottom in terms of increased support of harbor use. And this was even before we began the harbor plan process. And then in the middle, we talk about protecting the natural beauty, open space, beaches, and harbors. And at the bottom, amend zoning to increase affordable housing for people with lower incomes. And then last but not least, and very relevant to a lot of the work that you're doing on planning right now, connect the downtown and harbor to make each a destination point. So I share this with you tonight really to kind of validate where we said we wanted to go as a community. And I think that got reflected very well in all of the plans that became part of this process. But it's now incumbent on us to actually take actions and make these opportunities a reality. So with that, let's move on to slide four. And this really just summarizes again what you guys know, which was the bulk of the time between 2017 to June of last year, when you approved the master plan, was putting together the actual plans. And it wasn't just the master plan, as we all know, but there were six plans, harbor, open space and rec, housing production plan, and then two smaller things that relate to sustainability, the MVP and the hazard mitigation plan. All of these were factored in at some level into the broader master plan and resulted in those implementation priorities that I referred to before. And throughout that process, you know, it goes without saying that we had multiple community forums. I think we had more community forums, honestly, in the last two years or three years than we have ever had as a community. So I do really think that we, at the time, we were putting all this together and documenting. It had a good sense of what the community was focused on. So with that, I'm going to move to slide five. And this really talks about where we are today and will be frankly, for an extended period of time, which is in implementation, the hard work of actually taking the opportunities and making them into action. So one of the first things that we did and asked Lauren to do when we met in January was to go back to the MABC and identify for us what the best practices were around implementation and what we should be using as some rules of kind of the road or or operating tools that we could help in order to ensure that we're successful. And MABC came back with really a couple of things. One, in the upper right hand corner, around communication and outreach. And that is clearly front and center in the charter that the Master Plan Implementation Committee has been given by the Board of Selectmen to make sure that we're communicating to the town, what are we doing? How is the implementation of the master plan transitioning from a planning document into a reality in terms of what actions are we taking? So we, along with hopefully, planning board's help and Board of Selectmen and all the committees that we'll be interacting with, will have a role in playing that communication outreach. But that is critical to the success of the implementation process. The other two on the left hand side, you know, tracking and working group notes. It sounds a little boring, but frankly, you have to take this from the perspective of that we are going to be working at this for a decade. And the reality is that the folks that are on the master plan implementation process in the planning board today may not be the committee members that are shouldering and moving things forward five or six years from now. So having a process where we're actually tracking in Excel in a detailed manner what we've actually done and what we're planning on doing, strategy by strategy, is important. And Lauren has already got us off to a good start. And in fact, Lauren, if you don't mind, after this meeting, I think it'd be helpful just to share to the planning board that tracking sheet, just so that you get a sense of, I mean, yes, there's a lot of work to be done, but there is a lot of things that's ongoing and part of already chartered and existing committees. And so we've got a good start. We just need to not only keep up the momentum on those, some of those things that are ongoing work, but then begin the implementation on some of the tougher areas. And then working group notes kind of goes hand in hand, which is we started a practice of really detailing all the conversations that we're having, whether it's obviously minutes for our own committee meetings. But if members of the Master Plan Implementation Committee go out and meet, let's say, with affordable housing and have a conversation with them, we try and document it in detailed working group notes so that people coming on in the future, and for example, we're going to onboard a Board of Selectmen liaison in the next couple of weeks, they have a chance to really catch up and jump onboard quickly by reviewing the work that we've done and get a sense of where we've been with the working group notes. Last but not least, one of the things that we've talked a lot about, and you'll see us talk about in a, the priority implementation areas, is this concept of working groups. And what we talked a lot about this past spring was the fact that for a number of the priority areas that are urgent for the town, they're more complex. And frankly, they are cross-functional in nature. And so we needed to think about creating a mechanism that will allow us to successfully implement strategies across multiple committees. And there is a way to do it. It's totally kosher under open meeting law. In fact, I've had a conversation as recently as this morning with town council. And the fact, the fact is that committees can and work and collaborate together on moving forward the work of the public. And so what we're recommending in a couple of cases is actually working groups that overlap existing standing committees to try and move forward some initiatives. And you know, the way that we think about it is as a tool to help us more effectively implement the master plan strategy. It doesn't succeed the committee's actual day to day work, but hopefully gives us some time and some ability to do that heavy lifting that maybe not will not, or maybe does not have the time and space in a regular agenda or in the, in sort of the daily duties of the committee. So we'll talk to you a little bit more, and we'll show you some examples of what we're talking about and some areas where we'd actually specifically like some help from the planning board. But this concept of working groups and really having collaborative work between master plan implementation, planning board, Board of Selectmen, sewer commission, affordable housing, is how we're going to get some of the heavy lifting done. So with that, I'm going to move to the next page, which is our goals. And I won't go through each of these, but it really falls under communicate, which I referred to on this last slide as being one of the best practices. Collaborate, as I alluded to, working groups are going to be one of the the areas that we'd like to see a focus. And you know, I'd mentioned upfront, I mean, there are 30 town committees. And if you look at the implementation chapter and the implementation matrix, it's pretty staggering the amount of coordination that we'll need to do in order to be successful. So collaboration will be key. Centralizing focus on a couple of high priority areas. We felt like this was very essential, especially in year one of the master plan implementation. A lot of the top priority areas that we're talking about are urgent for a reason. And there are limited bandwidth of not only the town employees. There's only one Lauren Lind, unfortunately. And that holds true for other town departments, but also holds true for us as volunteers on town committee. So in terms of what we were asking, we're really asking, at least in year one, that we stay focused on a couple of high priority areas. And and we may not be able to tackle all of these and complete them in year one. I think that's a little too high of a goal, but I think we can get a good start and certainly make a lot of progress hopefully as it relates to implementation. And last but not least is cultivating resources. We recognize that in some of these initiatives, there's going to be the need for financial resources in order to support the ultimate implementation. And we actually had a serious conversation with the Board of Selectmen last night about the fact that while we're not coming forward and requesting anything specifically now, we put them on notice to the fact that there will be requests coming for financial support and potentially support as it relates to external resources, such as consultants or subject matter experts as we get deeper into some of the implementation work. I think all of you are aware that annual town meeting, there was $50,000 allocated as part of the one-time expenses that was designated for consulting services. So we actually do have a small amount of money that's available to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, planning, and other committees that are trying to move forward implementation. So we can actually go back to the town manager and request use of those resources to the extent that we need external assistance. With that, I'm going to jump to slide seven, which is what the initial implementation recommendations are. And these are the top five priority areas that we've identified. Affordable housing and ADA compliance, economic development plan, zoning bylaw review, regional sewer, and Elm Street corridor. And Elm Street corridor, just to be clear, since I'm talking to the planning board, this is separate in our minds from the work that you've already begun in terms of the CHI review. This is really the connection between the, the public way connection between the village and the harbor. It does not involve any deliberation on the Elm Street Harbor Inn or the associated commercial property across the road. Although it obviously plays a role in it in terms of creating that viewscape, if there is to be one. I wanted to just pause here, and one of the things you'll see on the following slides as we dive into each of these individually, is the fact that we chose these because of the high importance to the community. And in a lot of cases, it ties back to some of the things that I highlighted on the opportunity slide at the outside of the conversation. But what is also really consistent across all of these is that there is an urgency that is driving the need to tackle these first. And that is, in some cases, driven by external factors that we don't control. So we're either going to have this happen to us, or we can choose to proactively begin to work on it. You know, an example of that is, you know, we started in on a regional sewer conversation back in 2017. And we're now at the point, after a phase one report, of we either need to move forward into phase two, or we need to withdraw. So there are some points that are coming up, not necessarily on all of these, but there are some external triggers or points that are driving these to have a higher level of urgency along with the importance to the overall community as articulated by the visioning process. The other thing I would note about all five of these, and you'll see when we get to the next slide, that a lot of these initiatives have a high degree of dependency, whether it's dependency on multiple committees moving them forward or dependencies on other external factors, such as affordable housing. We won't hit that affordable housing goal unless we have completion of the STASCO development at 390 Justice Chief CJC. And then last but not least, a lot of them will require a high degree of public support in order to be successful. So it is the importance to the community, the urgency that is behind a number of these initiatives, the high degree of interdependency, and also the high degree of public support in most cases that really bring these to the top in terms of what we're asking be the top five priorities for the implementation process. So with that, I'm going to go through these. The first two, I'm going to go through pretty quickly. I think it's important that obviously, the planning board understand and we'd like at the end to get your blessing on this discussion. But the final three, zoning bylaw, regional sewer, and Elm Street corridor, are really the three that we see the biggest opportunity for there to be a partnership between the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the planning board in terms of forming some working group relationships in order to move them forward. So with that, Lauren, if you don't mind, moving to slide eight. So this is the first slide, and all the slides look exactly like this. I'm just going to orient you quickly to that. So the upper left hand is a box that we put together that really ties it back to what are the specific strategies in the master plan that we're looking to tackle. So the affordable housing, it has, we're tying it back to four implementation strategies, three in housing and one in public facilities. And we think it's important, as we are in the implementation committee, to really continually tie this work back to the master plan because that is, that is what you voted to support last year, and that's what we have been chartered to move forward. In the upper right hand quarter, I alluded to the fact that we've kind of ranked all of these around urgency, the number of dollars required for this project to be successful, what the level of dependency is, and that could be external, or that could be committee dependencies, the level of public agreement that has to happen in order for this to be successful. And if there are grant funding contingencies or grant funding that we need to consider as part of the process, because that does drive, as we all know, a certain cycle. And then in the middle, what we've laid out here is kind of a sample working group. And again, this is something that we feel strongly about in order to be successful. In the case of affordable housing, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, affordable housing trust and steering committee, along with CPC, the town. And then in a couple of cases, actually, the sewer commission, all need to get on the same page as it relates to our ability to be able to maintain our safe harbor under Chapter 40B and be able to utilize CPC funding in order to put in place new affordable housing projects. So in terms of the next steps, I'm not going to go through each of these unless people feel really strongly, quickly polling, looking. But what I would say here, and it's no surprise, that the number one thing that not only the Master Plan Implementation Committee identified, but also affordable housing has identified, is the fact that 2021 will be the year which we're measured against the 2020 census results. And right now, we anticipate the need to have 22 40B and eligible units by 2021 in order to maintain that safe harbor. And 20 of the 22 are tied up in the 390 CJC project and the discussions that are ongoing about a number of issues, including sewer versus private septic. So and then I do want to highlight the last bullet point, which is something that Lauren has already put in process for the town, which is an ADA self-evaluation transition plan. And it's something that if the town completes it, and frankly, we have five years, I believe, Lauren, is that correct?
Lauren? Yes, it would be more like four now. I submitted that in July of 2019.
Okay, so four years to complete. The benefit of doing the ADA self-evaluation transition plan is that when we complete it, not only does it enable us to have a better perspective on where our potential deficits are relative to ADA, and I can say, having been involved in some school committee conversations about deficits relative to playgrounds, you do not want to be going in front of the architectural review board and trying to remediate. You'd rather proactively take care of ADA compliance issues that you discover yourselves before they get reported to the state. But that being said, even from an ADA compliance perspective, if we complete this evaluation and transition plan, it is one of the things that will help us get back to being a housing choice community partner and being eligible for capital grants. So if we complete that and we hit some pretty significant benchmarks in terms of housing production, we will be eligible for grants in the future, which will help us towards this overall priority area. So with that, I'm going to move on to slide number nine. And this is economic development. And as you can see at the top, there are really three implementation priorities to an economic development and one in land use that we've highlighted as being important and tying back to the master plan. What I would say here is the COVID crisis has kind of presented a unique urgency in some ways around economic development. It was already something that the Board of Selectmen had identified and has begun to think about re-chartering an economic development council. But the COVID crisis has created a short, a need to consider in the short term, some strategies to address economic development to help support our small businesses. So the idea here is that there would be kind of three next steps. One is really educating the work, a working group that we're proposing here between the co-asset select board, Master Plan Implementation Committee, citizens at large, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or other citizens that might set forward to be part of the EDC, and the town, that we do some education around what tools and state funds are available. It's been a while since we've had EDC or we've really done any economic development planning in town. And so starting kind of with the basics and frankly, getting some of the low hanging fruit that is available in terms of state tools and funds is going to be critical. As I alluded to, there is a short term opportunity to really help businesses for the next, you know, I don't know, six, 12, 18 months as we address COVID. And then in terms of the other goal, it's really working to stand up for the first time in a long time, an economic development council, and begin to use best practices from other communities around how we can put in place a economic development plan. So with that, I'm going to skip to slide 10. So with that, I'm gonna skip to slide 10. And this is the first slide that really touches on an area that we would like to directly partner with the planning board. Zoning bylaw review. This is pretty comprehensive and core to the master plan. Lauren went back through the actual implementation strategies, and there are 20 strategies that either directly relate or indirectly relate to zoning. And I think a lot of you are aware, but they touch on things like accessory dwelling units, clear-cutting bylaw, demolition delay, issues between the harbor's edge and the water edge, which obviously have been kind of centered to what was done with the overlay, context-appropriate density, working in housing to identify the missing middle, things related to the common historic district. There's some things related to solar energy arrays. And then a more general desire that's expressed by the community, and certainly was expressed in that initial opportunity around how do we come up with a plan before the town is overdeveloped, in a general review of the zoning bylaws to think about smart growth and also, and as a corollary, think about how we enforce them. So in terms of the barriers to success, from my perspective, the urgency is coming from the fact that from 2003 to 2014, the half of the undeveloped land in Cohasset was developed. And we're in the current master plan, we're actually facing a potential build-out, I think in the plan, of roughly 470 units. And so in some ways, we're in that final build-out period, if you call it the next five, 10, 15 years. And if we're going to do something to kind of address all of these issues, now is the time to really proactively take action. I would also say that frankly, we haven't been that proactive, and I don't take that as a slight on anybody, but rather the fact that frankly, we didn't have a town planner to guide us through this process for a lot of the last decade. And so we haven't necessarily gone back and looked across all of the zoning bylaws in order to address some of these issues. So the idea would be to partner between the planning board, master plan implementation, ZBA, potentially bring in an external consultant who has some expertise, and then obviously working with town employees like Laura and Jen Oram and Bob Egan. But step number one is to kind of create that working group and to begin review and rewriting of zoning bylaws. I'm gonna pause here and ask Tom to quickly jump in, because he and I have kind of been brainstorming some of this, and perhaps, Tom, you can walk us quickly through some of the next steps, just to kind of add another voice, because I've been talking and I do need to take a drink of water. So Tom, are you able to speak? Are you there, Tom?
Yeah, I'm there, but I couldn't hear the last two minutes of the session.
Okay. Well, sorry.
Never mind.
All right, I will continue. Sorry, it was a bad handoff on my part. Apology.
I'm tired of this systemality. Never mind.
So in terms of the next steps, obviously, creating a working group, and that's something that we want to discuss tonight. But really, trying as part of that working group to establish what is the end objective in terms of having some conversations to kind of put some parameters around how large does the town wish to be, what is preserving the town's character look like? Because that does come up quite a bit in conversations about zoning. And tied to this, actually, and we'll touch on this later, is the fact that regional sewer has the potential to significantly change what the land use looks like in some targeted high priority areas that are along 3A, South Main, and one particular area in the sewer plan called C6, which is basically the border between Situate and Cohasset. So our idea was to create a working group and begin to look holistically at the 20 strategies and tackle a broader review of the zoning bylaws. We would hope that as part of that, we could actually begin to understand a little bit some of the fiscal impacts of what that zoning or build-out could look like. And certainly, it's pretty easy to understand from history what the impacts are of a certain amount of new incremental housing and what that means in terms of incremental school population. It's a little harder sometimes to tie it directly to town services, but there is a corollary there. And last but not least, this is really an opportunity just to increase inner coordination and transparency on an issue that's important to the community, and that's clear from the number of master plan strategies that it touches. So with that, I'm gonna move on to regional sewer. Regional sewer is an issue that's been in discussions since 2007, and our committee kind of recently became students of regional sewer. I felt like I personally had been hearing, I'd been hearing about it for a number of years and aware at kind of a high level, but I didn't understand the details. And so we gathered a whole bunch of information that's publicly available and have kind of dived into it. And what I would say in summary is that, you know, this discussion started at a very high level regionally back in 2017. At the time, it was Hingham, Hall, Situate, and Cohasset that began conversations. Pretty quickly, Hingham decided that it didn't want to participate, and became the three towns that we all know currently are involved in those conversations. There was a feasibility study that was done in 2018, and then a grant was received by all three towns that allowed us to work with Woodard and Curran, who are the consultants that helped manage our wastewater plant, to do a phase one regional wastewater management plan that was actually completed in May of last year. And so as of May, there was a comprehensive report that laid out four alternatives to move forward. One of them was to do nothing in terms of the cost of going alone. Different ways of, people still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. It's got a weird message saying I was being muted. So the strategies have been clearly articulated in this phase one plan. Since then, there was an addendum done to the plan that was published in February of 2020. In March of 2020, Situate and Hall came out and wrote letters in support of one specific alternative, 5.1. And since that point, they have been waiting for a response from Cohasset. And to be very honest, it was COVID hit in April, but that doesn't necessarily excuse us for the sweep of history. We've had this phase one report since May. The reality is that within the next period of time, we either have to decide whether we want to participate in regional sewer, which has some clear environmental benefits, it has some clear redundancy benefits for Cohasset. We are not necessarily rock solid. In fact, I don't think people know, but in this winter, we were having such troubles at our plant off of Elm Street, our two membranes were failing, they've recently been replaced this spring, that almost all of North Cohasset's flow and a significant portion of the central district's flow had to be redirected to Hall at a cost to Cohasset because our plant could not handle it. So redundancy, long-term, is something that we should be concerned about as a community because, like any small town, our services are, when they fail, we need to have backup strategies. So having partnerships regionally can make a big difference, and it did, having an administrative agreement already in place that we could leverage with Hall. That being said, there has not been a single comprehensive negotiating position for Cohasset. And really, the goal here is to work with the sewer commission, who has a clearly has a lead role, to help get us to the point where we can articulate whether we're going to be a regional sewer or not. And part of that is twofold. One is making sure that we have a detailed point of view as it relates to the land use impacts. There were six priority areas that I've listed here under the next steps that are areas that if we were to enter into any of the reasonable alternatives being looked at, would likely be the areas that would be impacted by sewer. In addition to that, there really isn't a lot of public knowledge around regional sewer. And I think most of us know that the cost and the dollar signs associated with regional sewer are quite large. I mean, the cheapest alternative in the report, 5.1, I think is $15 million. Alternative four, which is another kind of viable option, is close to $30 million for Cohasset. So this is a big investment for the town of Cohasset, and it certainly needs to be evaluated through that lens. So this is one where it would be very helpful to partner with the planning board, particularly as it relates to some of the land use pieces, because if this does move forward, it's going to impact the work that the planning board incurs in the future as sewer runs past some of the potential undeveloped and potentially developed parcels, along with just the connection of existing homes. So with that, I'm gonna move on to Elm Street corridor. So Elm Street corridor, what we laid out here was that it ties into really two specific strategies in the master plan, but also two specific strategies in the harbor plan. And what we would like to see happen here is a further articulation of what the actual goals are for this corridor. Today, we know we have an external opportunity that is driving some of those conversations. Actually, there's two. You know, obviously, one is the Cohasset Harbor Inn development at the end of Elm Street that potentially opens up the new corridor. But there's a second external factor, which is the fact that Elm Street is slated to have replacement of its water mains in 2021. So both of these factors kind of lead you to believe that this could be one of the first visible steps that we take as part of the harbor revitalization, and will provide a really high-profile and very public way for the community to enjoy and improve the connectivity between the village and the harbor. And so what we're recommending in terms of next steps is really first, getting a focus group in place with the various stakeholders to begin to work on defining exactly what are we looking for in terms of this public connector between the village and Elm Street. And I listed out some of the things that have come up in conversations and are articulated in the harbor plan around a gateway, a viewscape, streetscape improvements, wayfaring and signs, the idea that there's the possibility of a historic storyboard that kind of leads people from the village to the harbor in terms of the history of that whole area. The other factor that we want to make sure is first and foremost, in terms of what the working group would focus on, is the availability of Mass Works infrastructure grants and Complete Streets grants. And there are timings associated with both of those that would drive the project forward. I know that Mass Works probably up first, but I'm sure Complete Streets is a fast follower in terms of grant application. I already mentioned the coordination needed around the water main infrastructure. But last but not least, is there is another dependency in this, which is the public safety building. And I think we all know that as part of the public safety and facilities chapter, the need for a potential move and improvement to the public safety building has been part of the public conversations for a while. Town Hall obviously has been at the top of the list, given the condition of that building. But there are many deficiencies and issues associated with public safety from a physical perspective, but then also there's the response time issue. And so if we were to have a conversation and a working group that was tackling the Elm Street corridor, one of the things that we've talked about as a committee is the fact that the public safety building needs to be discussed as part of that, not necessarily to make the move in terms of a new facility now, but at least have the conversation and put in place a discussion around that element, should it move in the future, what that space could become and what it could be utilized for in terms of the community and the community's benefit. So with that, I'm gonna move quickly through a couple slides and then get to the conversation that I'd like to have with everybody around how we can collaborate together. So just quickly.
Katie?
Yeah?
Say one thing, which is, we're now at 7:17.
Yep.
And we had scheduled to 7:15. So I want to ask Ms. Dunn, who's on the meeting here, if she would accept the fact that we're gonna push things forward about 20 minutes. And I'm gonna presume, let me see, I can see speakers, I can see all the participants. And it appears that at this moment, oh, let me see, attendees, right there. Okay, she's not on the line right now. So let's continue, and I'll monitor this, and I'll send her a separate connect to inform her of what we're doing so that she can plan to be coming back by, let's say, 7:35?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, great.
So medium-term implementation priorities, this is really the acknowledgement that we've obviously identified five short-term priorities that we'd like to be the focus of the initial implementation. But as we were having those outreach conversations that we documented in the pre-read document, we did have conversations with other committees about other priorities, and we've documented them here. And our thought process is that we need to acknowledge the fact that over time, as bandwidth and as committees have the appetite, there will be other priorities that are tackled, and we'd like to kind of systematically organize those as a parking lot, per se, of things that we go back and look at on a periodic basis and see if we can move them forward, or if there's additional urgency or dependencies that would move them out of what we're considering kind of the medium-term parking lot into a nearer-term implementation working group. So with that, last but not least, is on slide 14, how we kind of thought about longer term. And this is really articulated in the fact that what we chose to recommend really falls into the important and urgent category. Medium-term priorities were less important, but still urgent from some committee or community perspective. And then longer term, it's not that they're not important, but they were less urgent, and often that has to do with external timing factors or pressures. And in some cases, we recognize that the long-term implementation priorities are going to require some significant advanced capital planning. And I think that falls very true against some of the public facilities conversations. I mean, I think we all are aware of Town Hall. Obviously, public safety has been on the list and continues to be on the list of, you know, a $20-plus-million-dollar project. And then more recently, I'm not sure how, where you guys are on planning, but the schools came forward and asked to reform the school facilities committee, which is a bylaw committee, to relook at renovating, significant renovations, or the potential for a new middle high school. And so there are, continue to be a lot of long-term and important priorities, but that will require some significant capital planning on the part of the town in order to be able to accomplish that number of generational projects in a organized and financially affordable manner. So with that, if we can go to slide 15, this is really what our definition of success looks like. If long-term or in alignment with the community vision and opportunities that we talked about, there would be broad community awareness of the implementation. We'd actually have implemented most of the goals and strategies, maybe not all of them, but we actually get the work of the master plan done over the next decade. We also think it's important to normalize and socialize the fact that we're going to be reevaluating these priorities on a regular basis, maybe not monthly, but certainly yearly in order to ensure that there's continued relevance. And all of that will make sure that the plan actually remains a living document. And so we get to slide 16, which is the last slide, and this is really what we would like to ask the planning board to assist us on. First is cosponsoring the implementation, considering we'd like to get your approval and input on the initial recommendations tonight. We would like to have a conversation about collaboration and how we can work with the planning board and working groups. planning board in working groups in order to help implement some of these high-priority areas. And specifically zoning bylaw review, Elm Street corridor, and regional sewer are kind of three on our list where we would particularly like some help. And then last but not least, is really communicate. Planning board members, you are community members, obviously, talking up the master plan is important. But I think for us, it's really having a place on your agenda, obviously not every month, but making sure that we're staying in touch with you in terms of regular updates. And also, you know, you as a board, asking your liaison members and your working group members to provide updates back to the full committee, so that you continue to be connected, whether you're specifically working on a priority or not. I feel very strongly that boards, especially if you have liaisons or you have working groups, it's incumbent on those liaisons and working groups to make sure that all the members are aware of what's going on. It's not a solo mission, as it were. So with that, I'm going to stop and turn it back to Amy and Lauren, perhaps to kind of guide us as to how you want to go about talking about cosponsoring and collaboration as it relates to implementation.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Katie. That was a very thorough presentation. Would you mind putting up the last slide, please, so we can focus on that? And because it seems to me that it summarizes pretty clearly what we need to do right away. And what we're being asked to do is to co-sponsor implementation. That's extremely important as we move forward, because the master plan implementation committee is going to be asking people to be participating in an action and putting their time toward work for the town. And the master plan implementation committee needs that justification to be able to say that. The second is that we're being asked for individuals to be collaborators in the key three items, which are felt to be the most immediate priority, and they're often interconnected one way or the other. And then finally, the communication of what we're doing, both on a regular basis in our meetings, but also, and that means that we do schedule on a frequent, we'll try out what a frequency is that would seem to make sense, and we'll find it over time, so that we do stay in alignment with the master plan implementation committee and the planning board. So let me just say that I think that town and the planning board can easily take on the issue of formalizing some form of communication that is regularized and meets with the approval of the master plan implementation committee, as well as being connected to the Cohasset 143, so that we have an ongoing dialogue with the community. So let's just put that aside and say that's something that we're going to do. If there's a member of the planning board that would like to speak to that, either opposed or perhaps opposition is the point that would be, otherwise, then it just would be something we would move forward with. So let me ask, is there any debate about that particular issue, forming some type of communication system for the ongoing work of the master plan implementation committee?
Sounds great. By the way, Katie, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
So then we have the two other items that are here, and these will need to have some deliberation. We don't have a whole lot of time. We have to decide if we want to try to have a lot of time. If we do, I need to also get back to our citizen who has a discussion that they wish to have with us. But I guess what I'd like to ask is the following. It would seem, since this beast has grown out of us and is central to what we do in the future, that we support it to a level sufficient to choose to co-sponsor its implementation. That does not bind us to anything in particular. What it does say is we believe in the effort, and we will be accommodating and supportive of it. And let's take that one, because I think that that can have some deliberation, but not be potentially controversial. So I open it up for the planning board members to speak what they say.
And I'm obviously here to answer questions, because I know I did all the talking, too. So maybe some questions.
Well, as I-
Let me just say something. Does everybody understand here that the master plan, believed by state statute, is the purview of the plan here? We are the driving board for the master plan. Implementation Committee, thankfully, has been set up to do the dirty work and the nitty-gritty and the day-to-day stuff that in meetings like this, we cannot do. But I have to structurally understand what the master plan is and who really the driving board behind it. By statute, it's supposed to be generated and started and implemented and passed by the planning board. So we're the parent committee of this master plan. Master Plan Implementation Committee is essentially a specially-appointed subcommittee in structure to put it into place, simply because the planning board doesn't have the bandwidth and it's two meetings a month to do it all. I just hope everybody understands that.
Thanks, Tom. That's a useful clarification. If I see no other gestures, I then wish to ask the members of the planning board to take a voice vote to serve as the, I lost, Jen, can you put the, or no, Katie or Jen, put the last slide up so that we can deal with the language exactly? I wish then to ask the planning board members to approve and serve as the co-sponsor of the master plan implementation committee's recommendations. And I'd like a voice vote, and I'm going to go in alphabetical order.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the MPIC initial recommendations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please state your name when you second.
Tom Calhoun.
Thank you. Voice vote would be Clark Brewer.
Aye.
Tom Callahan. Paul Grady's not here. Eric Potter.
Looks like Eric fell off.
Okay. Eric Potter.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, please state your name and your vote.
Eric Potter, aye.
Okay. Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right. We've voted to be the co-sponsor of the implementation of the master plan.
I'm sorry.
And approve its initial recommendations.
Fantastic. Are there any concerns or questions, or people, obviously, you voted yes, but I guess I would say, please feel free to reach out to anybody on the committee if you want to talk about particular elements of this, because we are in outreach mode, and that includes our parent and sponsor, which is the planning board.
Right. And I think that probably the most reasonable plan for us to have is to have another meeting in which we perhaps go over details that we think are important, or we might even want to have a discussion about how we want to operate together. Because while you are asking for specific participation on specific activities, you also will no doubt need us in other settings. But I don't think that that necessarily has to occur now. Is that all right?
That's fine. And I guess, you know, we're asking for the collaboration. We put forward a specific request in terms of areas where we would like a planning member to step forward and work with us in a working group format around zoning bylaw, Elm Street, and regional sewer. And to the extent, I know you guys are going to have a discussion later in this meeting and in future meetings about how you break up work. And so if you want to incorporate in that, I guess our desire is that quickly, and it doesn't have to be tomorrow or next week, but quickly, we move into a mode of actually beginning to work in working groups and begin to define some of the next steps and the work processes behind the working groups and the top five recommendations.
Thank you. So I would ask that planning board members, recognizing the three top areas where the master plan implementation committee would like us to provide someone to be a participant in that process and support, and to attend, and to enrich, is to indicate to Lauren or myself or Jen your interest. Otherwise, we will approach you directly and request based on our own sense of whose background and experience would be most relevant for the individual topics.
Amy, I've got a question for Lauren. Lauren, we've been talking about putting together a stakeholders' meeting for the Elm Street corridor for a while, and I wonder what the latest status of that is? And is this the same thing or something different?
Same thing.
Same thing, yes. This is the group that would be facilitating that discussion and moving that forward.
So the master, so the master plan implementation committee is going to be the lead, if you will, on Elm Street Village Harbor connection corridor?
We're not asking to be the lead. We're asking to have a working group in which we participate and you participate in moving it forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't really matter. I just want to make sure that this has brought a stakeholder web that can be cast for, particularly at the early parts. I mean, I think the working group, kind of single-issue working group approach, where people who are knowledgeable and have diverse interests can come together and collaborate as fully and completely as possible is good. And narrow the focus and actually get work done.
But what I envision is that there's a working group that sponsors a focus group in order to get everybody's input. I mean, it is, there are only so many people who are going to be doers in all of this, and the doer should be on the working group, and yet the working group is incumbent on gathering the large public input. And that is clearly, in my mind, step number one as it relates to Elm Street corridor.
So Clark, we don't have the mechanism completely worked out, but as I said, if there are people on the planning board who would like to be on specific subtopics, that would be really terrific if you step up and let us know. Otherwise, we will contact you directly. And-
I've already done some design work on the View corridor and the corridor, based on Complete Streets. And I think the View corridor was my concept, so I'm definitely interested in following up, so.
That's great, because that's what we were hoping you would say. So that seals the deal. And so then we have two other topics, and I know you all know who is going to be fingered for the rest of them, so don't worry about it. Tom, would you like to sign up for one?
All right. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm going to be involved in zoning bylaws one way or the other.
Great.
Since I think regional sewer requires a review of zoning the area where it's going, probably will stick my nose in that one at some point.
Okay, but take one and, okay, great. So we have two of the three, and I really appreciate that.
I would say on planning, on the zoning, I think it's, Tom is already on the master plan implementation committee as an open space liaison. So zoning is one where I would honestly love to see a second person from the planning board. It's non-quorum, so it's not an issue from that perspective, but it's also a heavy lift when it comes to zoning. So more the merrier on that one, for sure.
I mean, I have an idea still, I think I brought it up at the selection last night, of reconstituting the zoning advisory committee from being whatever it is now, a second set of eyes that is not necessary to the review of proposed bylaws, but to actually have it. Its original charge was to vet and think about new bylaws, and I'd like to actually see that reconstituted as this working group.
And in all fairness, we pulled together that benchmarking work as part of the master plan implementation discussion around zoning. So we actually have a list of all other towns that have some form of zoning bylaw study group advisory committee. So there's lots of ways that we could relook at reconstituting that. But I think by my broader point is that it's a heavy lift, and it clearly ties into the planning board. And so I would, I'd love to see a second, if, and it doesn't have to, person doesn't have to raise your hand now, from planning on zoning.
Just one point, everyone may not realize this, but the ZAC has been meeting on a regular basis in anticipation of town meeting for review of bylaws, you know, over the last decade or more.
Thank you, Clark. And we did talk about that. And it has been meeting to review warrant articles. I think what we're talking about, and I'm sure you appreciate, is that it's a little bit more proactive in terms of driving some of that. But it does, as Tom alluded to, have a form already. I think its charter and its form certainly could be quickly relooked at. And as I alluded to, there's some benchmarking we did, just to make sure that we're doing it in a way that we'd like to live with for an extended period of time.
All right.
Because Amy, what I would recommend is if the planning board is amenable to it, to really look at that ZAC charter and look at the ZAC benchmarking that we did, and have a specific conversation about it as a tool to move that particular priority forward.
So Katie, would you recommend that the planning board do that as a whole in a public meeting?
Yes.
All right. So then we'll schedule that in the next, you know, 30 days, 30 to 45 days. We have a pretty packed schedule right now. So I, Clark?
Just so everyone knows, the ZAC committee exists in the general bylaw, so anybody can look it up.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. So we'll distribute that so everybody has access to it. In the interest of our, Jen?
Sorry. I just wanted to say two things. I was just going to, Clark beat me to it about the ZAC, because I attend all of those. And also, so not to spread the members too thin, if interested, I would be more than happy to also work on the zoning portion of this. I've worked with the zoning board for 15 years and sat on over 100 different hearings, and also met, I also sat with the town of Situate and redid all the zoning bylaws on that committee. So I'd be happy to sit in if the board would have me.
Yay.
I love volunteers.
I see, I see a multitude of nods up and down, so I guess you have just been anointed. I don't mean to be a bug about time, but I did indicate to our citizen who's waiting that they would be able to speak at this time. Before that happens, however, I would like to turn it over to Lauren, so that she can get us up to speed on 8 James Lane and move us forward on that.
All right, thank you. And thank you to Katie and the members of the master plan implementation committee for another great presentation. It's been a busy week for MPIC with Monday, yesterday, and today. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. With that, our next meeting agenda, let's see, our next moment is, it's a public hearing for 8 James Lane and 2 Pleasant Street. We did continue this from our last hearing per request from the applicant, and now we have received a formal request for withdrawal without prejudice. So the motion now, if the board would entertain, would be to approve that request and close the hearing. There will be no deliberation tonight.
And so by withdrawing it, what's there now, the former ice cream place, is going to stay just as it is.
Correct. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, you need to have your mic closer to your mouth.
What should it, I'm sorry, I'm frustrated by this technology stuff, but, so we shouldn't be seeing any changes out on the site in other words, right?
Correct. Correct. It's essentially stopped in time. Clark?
I'm not a very trusting soul, so let's make sure we watch what goes on over there.
Clark?
Just Clark with a comment. The developer hasn't been particularly interested in cleaning up his site. In fact, I think he's left it messy on purpose, and if he's listening, he's been told this before. As if having, creating an eyesore and then putting together a project, I'm not going to describe, but putting together a project replacement for the eyesore is somehow he's doing is a good job. So I think if we make a motion to close the public hearing and accept the withdrawal, I think we need to have some communication with the developer about cleaning up the site and give them a timetable that's firm, and look into the decision and permitting to see if we have any ability to encourage this to happen quickly.
All right, that's a great recommendation, and Lauren and Jen both will work on that and bring that back to us at the next meeting that we have, and it'll be a point of information. Hopefully, it'll be something that is direct and actionable, but thanks, Clark, that's a great recommendation. So with that, I need to ask that a motion be made to close this current public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Tom.
Tom Callahan, second. Jen?
We just, we need voice votes, we, Airbnb needs to use their full name, just for the new laws, thank you.
Clark Brewer. And Lauren has a question, too.
If you wanted to make one motion to approve withdrawal without prejudice and close the hearing, you can do that.
So I'm a little bit concerned that we are putting a condition on this, and I'm wondering now that you say it as you do, whether or not we should wait and try to put the condition on the cleanup of the site before we close this, because we will have no leverage otherwise.
Well, what you're suggesting is that we continue the public hearing until we see what leverage there is with the developer to clean up the site.
Lauren, any thoughts on that?
I am not sure exactly what to say. I would look for Jen's input, actually. I don't believe you can condition if it's a withdrawal, so as Clark mentioned, that would be a continuance. Jen?
I think what you could do is do the proper withdrawal closing and then make a motion that you would like the building inspector to look into the site plan and see what can be issued. He's done that before, so it could be a separate movement, and you then, when there's a new application coming, you know, we have to make sure that this has been taken care of, we're not going to take a new application until they address the conditions on the site. The site needs to be cleaned up and shut, you know, address the issues that have been brought to his attention before.
All right, is that all right with everybody?
I'd just assume not put it off until they want to apply for a new site plan special permit modification. I'd just assume find a path that encourages them to at least clean up the site in the short term, so I guess I'd recommend that we either close the public hearing and continue the site plan special permit, or we just continue, and that'll give Bob a chance to take a look at what's there.
All right, Tom?
I just think legally, he's withdrawing the plan, you need to close the hearing, and if you're going to enforce cleaning up of the site, there has to be some legal basis to do so. So there's either a condition in his existing permit, or there's a bylaw that says you can't keep all kinds of crap on your property like that. So, you know, I think they're two separate issues, you know, close the hearing and then look for enforcement, as Jen suggested. It's either in the existing permit or it's not. I don't know that we have a bylaw that deals with the subject. Maybe, maybe we should, but that's, you know, we can't enforce what doesn't exist.
Let me clarify what you're saying, you're saying that if we were to continue, we still don't have any assurance that we can make the landowner clean up the property? Because we'd have to...
Unless somebody has knowledge right here at this moment that the existing permit has something to say about keeping the site clean and clear of debris and all, whatever. No, I think we have to just, there's no point in continuing a hearing that an applicant is withdrawing.
And just to repeat, my recommendation was to continue the hearing so that Lauren and Jen can review the original site plan special permit decision and see if there's any mechanism in there for...
Clark, you can do that, you can do that no matter what. I don't think you can keep an open hearing, for whatever ramifications keeping a hearing open has, I think you can independently enforce an existing permit if there's something in there, so.
Jen?
Well, ultimately, ultimately, we don't have to accept the withdrawal without prejudice. That's the sticking point here, where we could say we deny the special permit, in which case the developer has to come back with a new plan or wait two years. So that's the only, that's the only carrot...
That's the leverage we have.
That's the only carrot-stick mechanism, I think, that exists in this case, and I'd just like more information. That's just me, so I'll let somebody else make the motion here.
Could I ask one question? Lauren, isn't this application, is this a separate application, or is it a modification of the existing site plan?
Modification.
Okay, so that's what Clark is saying, is that this is related to the initial application by a modification of the existing, so I can see that. The only reason we wanted to close it is for technical reasons, due to the fact that we'd like the entire board to be able to sit on a new application, because we have new membership, and we've had absences. So either way would work, but the enforcement portion happened prior to this application with Bob, and we can do so again if we guarantee, you know, we could make everybody happy, we could, the board has a couple of options, so I just wanted to put that in, if it's related, we could continue it and talk to the applicant and say, please, address it in this time, have Bob do that when he returns next week, or you could do what they have asked, and we can still do that. So I just think, you know, it's really up to the board to decide what they want to do, and I don't mean to give you two choices, but you do have two choices if it's already related to the existing special permit.
So let's see if we can get a vote on the latter, the one she just spoke of, which is to continue the public hearing and request that Bob Egan visit with the property owner and negotiate a site cleanup, and then return to us for a closure of the permit. Can I see a vote of hands? Please state your name. Tom Callahan?
Eric Potter.
Name Eric, please. Name? I need you to say your name, Eric.
Eric Potter.
Alex.
Paul Colery?
Paul Colery, aye.
Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. The recommendation has been accepted by the board, and this instructs Jen and Lauren to go back and work on unburdening the site and arriving at an outcome that we would be more inclined to support. Lauren?
I could just have, we need to continue to a date and time certain, so I would suggest September 9th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second?
Clark Brewer.
Okay, please, roll call, Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan?
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Colery?
Aye.
Need to say your name, sir?
Paul Colery, aye.
Thank you. Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right, thank you all very much. So let's move on to our next item. Good job, I'm glad we spent the time to investigate that to the point of some solution other than just closing it. I would now like to invite Ms. Dunn of Beach Street to speak with us on an informal basis about the scenic roads bylaw. Please state your name and your address.
She's muted. Oh, so, okay, here we go. Hi, it's Elizabeth Dunn, my address is 21 Beach Street. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, so I simply had some questions about the scenic roads bylaw. I was responsible for, you know, bringing Beach Street to the Planning Board, and I happened to spend a lot of time walking on the street, and I just had emailed back in March to a few members. My first email went to Jason Frederico, just because I know he's the town engineer and is involved in some public works, and so I was just trying to figure out who is actually responsible, accountable for following up with projects that are done on scenic roads, and I sent him some pictures, and I don't, you know, at some point, I was asked to come to the meeting. I had shared some information with Amy. Clark, I was given your email, but it was the wrong email, so you probably never got any information.
Quick question. I remember reading the email, I think you had a concern about a town construction project, and there was some mess and debris and trash, but it was town work in the right-of-way on Beach Street that was your main question, or can you just tell us what your main kind of concerns are?
Well, there were, you know, there were, I don't know whether, I mean, it was, specifically, it was a gas line project is what I could tell. I mean, it's not like, as a resident on the street, I ever got any information, and there was just, you know, trucks were pulling over onto the shoulder of the road, leaving in, you know, in the cusp season in March, and creating huge potholes, you know, in the road shoulder, and it hadn't been rectified after the crew left. There is still a hay bale on one of the bridges, I do understand that, I guess they're coming back. So I was simply wondering where the follow-up was, and, you know, I was glad to try to help, you know, figure out, we have this bylaw, and how do we actually, you know, implement it? Well, it's implemented, but how do we actually have any follow-up so that we can ensure that the scenic roads are actually being cared for in the way that the bylaw requires? So I don't know if that's too broad, but that's it.
Tom Callahan?
Dear and dear to my heart, because I wrote the bylaw and promoting it for 15 years until it got passed in 2017. I think we first, no, and I want to say that last year on the Open Space Committee, we sort of had a dressing down of the Director of Public Works, because trees had been cut down on South Main Street without getting the proper permit. I'm curious to know how many actual special scenic road permits this board has actually seen in the last two years. Does anybody have the answer quickly?
Not too many.
Yeah, I'm guessing that.
So, let him finish and then...
Yeah, let me just, so the focus of the scenic road bylaw is to, is rather narrow, it is to protect stone walls and trees, and it is not to necessarily regulate how they cut and cover for trench for gas line or water line, it's not necessarily to correct problems in the pavement. So it's, the permit is required if utilities or the town is doing work within the right-of-way of the scenic road that is going to impact walls and trees. So it's somewhat limited in its scope. That being said, the experience I had in the Open Space Committee last year, and the fact that you're saying we haven't had any scenic road permits, is that I don't think there is any enforcement of it, I don't think there's any oversight of it, I have my opinions as to why that is, and since its passage, I have been urging that every utility that does work in this town be made aware that we now have this bylaw and this process. I don't think that's been done. It was obvious in the tree-cutting episode, because it was admitted as such, that our town Department of Public Works was unaware of the bylaw, were unaware of its scope and what it needed to do, and I think there needs to be clear education of our staff at DPW and the Building Department and the Engineering Department about what this bylaw is, and what it does and what it's supposed to do, and I, you know, my observation as somewhat of an outsider is I haven't seen that happen.
I want to run this conversation as an information gathering exercise, so I'm going to go to people that I...
Amy, it's pointing out an enforcement problem that we have...
Oh, no, I understand, I understand, that's what you've done, so now I want to see from Jen and from Lauren if they have any evidence about information that's come to us about implementation of the law. So Jen, and then Lauren.
Are you sure you want Lauren to go first? I mean, I just know that this was going on, this happened before Lauren, so I just wanted to address first the South Main Street situation. Tom's absolutely correct, they were taken down without our knowledge. We had sent everything up to the different departments, however, we were transitioning multiple planners, we had interim when that happened. When that did happen, I worked with the town and with DPW and said, you know, and Lauren was with us, and we purchased new trees to be planted, it didn't solve the issue, but it was a big mistake, and we rectified that. Going forward, we have a form that they need to let us know if they're doing any work within the right-of-way, and there are criteria underneath the right-of-way that allow for tree trimming, et cetera, and those are given to us for record from the DPW, which I can scan. In addition, we did reach out to, where I worked with, and I know Lauren can address that, but we had a meeting with all the heads of DPW regarding just that, and we did reach out to all of the utilities, that they are aware that this work has to happen and they have to come for a permit. I can't speak to why we haven't seen any, you know, the work, as far as, like Tom said, that the issues that Ms. Dunn has are not under the purview of the bylaw, it doesn't mean, you know, it shouldn't have been cleaned up, but it doesn't fall under the purview of the bylaw. So everybody is very aware of it, and so if there's situations where something has been cut down other than the South Main Street, I'd like to know about that, because we are working with them, and that's really, I just wanted to say that we are aware of it, and there was a miscommunication, and I don't know where that happened, I wasn't, like, I wasn't really working the bylaw the previous planner was, and so when he left, I took it over with Lauren and with Eve Tapper, and we rectified a lot of issues, but it doesn't mean there isn't room for improvement, but I just want everyone to know that we are well aware of it, and I'm sure Lauren has more to add, but it was important to me that you knew all that.
All right, Lauren?
Yes, thank you. I will say that since my time here, as Jen just mentioned, we have, we have met with several staff members in DPW, we do a tree warden, we met with the Director of DPW and our field engineer, and went over this. field engineer and went over this. I actually was invited into a meeting with one of the utility companies to explain what the bylaw was so that they were aware of this. We do receive information from DPW in terms of utility, upcoming utility maintenance and, you know, when trees have been trimmed through hazard under the tree warden. With that said, in regards to Ms. Dunn's concerns on Beach Street, I did forward her, the concerns were regarding the construction debris as she spoke and also regarding speed limit on the street. I did forward those to our DPW director. We heard from the engineer that there's still active construction, that they're not complete with the gas line work and that will be ongoing. But that is why there's still hay bales and soil erosion control that you'll see until that project is complete. And then the, in terms of speed limit, that's actually something that needs to be taken up with Public Safety and the Board of Selectmen, which you can contact Tracy Connors in the Select Board's office to get that process started. And she'll work with the police chief as well, because that's not something that's in the purview of the planning board. So with that, to address scenic road, again, as Tom stated, scenic roads, it does cover the area in the town right of way, but there are instances where we've had phone calls where, you know, people have been concerned about a potential violation of scenic roads. And when it's been investigated by, you know, our zoning enforcement officer, it actually was not within the right of way, well into town property though. So there's a distinction there. So I think that we certainly, keeping in mind as we move forward, we just spoke about doing sort of a bylaw comprehensive review. There's certainly opportunities for improvement, but at this time, the concerns raised by Ms. Dunn on Beach Street are unfortunately not under the purview of the scenic roads bylaw.
All right, so. Ms. Dunn?
Yeah, hi, thanks. So I have one question about, I guess, the bylaw and I did read, and I can't remember the name of it. It was a Complete Streets report that was on the, on your committee's webpage of Town Hall. Is anybody familiar with that report?
Nope.
Okay. So, so within that, there was a discussion about scenic roads and, you know, the particular scenic roads in Cohasset. And I thought it said that the speed limit on scenic roads is 15 miles per hour. So I know that's not within the purview of your committee enforcing speed limits or anything like that. But I was just looking for, I guess, maybe, is that, is that part of scenic roads? So that we could, you know, outside of this committee, select people, town, police, et cetera, sort of start to peel away at this speed issue that has been going on for years? Did anybody, is, are you aware that that's in that report? I know there's a lot in there.
I will, I will say that I'm not aware if it's in that report. I haven't seen that report yet, but I know it's not in the scenic road bylaw.
It's not, yeah. I saw that. It was.
Yeah, the scenic road bylaw is, derives from a state law that really only talks about the narrow focuses of it. Now, as a local bylaw, could we maybe expand it to each? Yeah, but we'd have to go to town meeting and amend this bylaw to add other areas of concern that you're bringing up, which I, I'm not averse to doing, but what we initially passed is something that was strictly following and copying the state law.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Clark?
Regarding the speed limit issue, you know, 20 miles an hour for scenic roads isn't, isn't a bad idea, but it's under the purview of the Board of Selectmen and then our Public Safety.
I completely understand that and I've been working through them for, yeah, no, I understand that it just happened to be in, in that report.
One thing I've been.
The consultant's report.
One thing I've been working on for, over a decade is, is a one-way Sunday route, which is a part of Beach Street, which would close off to traffic one, one way and create a pedestrian family loop around Little Harbor.
Yep, it should have started March 16th. When the state shut down.
Would tend to slow down traffic. At least that one day.
Okay, so I just have one more question then and then, so, Tom, the, the bylaw really.
One direct question to me.
Oh, okay, Amy, or the bylaw, you know, is not that, you know, okay, what's enforceable, I guess, are trees and stone walls?
It's designed to protect trees and stone walls within scenic.
Right, okay. And I, you know, we're appreciative of that at least. So, just so that, for going forward, so trees, trees that are on private property?
No, just, just trees, just trees that are within the right of way of the road, which would be like on a grass strip right along the edge of the road.
Yeah, is that right of way defined by a certain amount of feet? I thought maybe.
It differs from road to road in town.
Okay.
A newer, a newer road should be designed to 40 feet, but some of the older ones like Beach Street may have layouts that are less than 40 feet. The records are all up in debt and at the county engineers, the town may have them as well, but it's really street by street.
Okay.
All right, so. Unfortunately, we, we don't have a lot that we can offer you in, in total that would achieve an outcome that would close this gap. It, it does not mean though that we cannot investigate options around the issue. And at least in our interactions with the selectmen, indicate that there is an issue that's been brought to our attention with regard to the two items. And as we go forward in the next year, in some of the items that we're going to be looking at in related, in relationship to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, these, some of these issues are likely to come up. And, and should they come up, we can notify you of them. In the meantime, Lauren, I know you have a million things to do, but if there's a way to see how creatively other communities have utilized the scenic bylaw as a vehicle for managing the edges, could, if you have time, it's over the next couple of months to look at that and see what we find, because I have a feeling that it's probably implemented differently in different towns.
Certainly.
The second issue is, my understanding is that there was a discussion before the selectmen about lowering the, the speed limit in town overall from 30 to 25 miles an hour. And my understanding is, is that they did not act on it. So I could be wrong, but I think that this is not a discussion that is decayed. It is something that was brought to the attention of the selectmen in the last six months. So we could, we could also communicate and see and report back about whether that indeed did happen. So, so we will, we will keep you apprised of what we find out. And as Tom suggested, and he has worked harder than anyone to get various bylaws passed around environmentally related issues over the last 10 years. That's always the opportunity, is to organize the community to say, this is what we want and, and see it through. It's a lot of work, but it's a really meritorious thing to do.
If you want to find out more about how other towns have dealt with this, Norwell is the model because Norwell has had scenic roads the longest of anybody around here. Their planner is relatively new and probably wouldn't have a lot of historical knowledge, but members of the Norwell Planning Board would be a good source of knowledge, of historical knowledge. And Norwell, what, two summers ago, three summers ago, had construction projects all over town. So they dealt with this very recently with recaving and all over their town. And almost every road in their town is a scenic road. So that's such a good source to find out best practices.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And we'll keep this on our, you know, to-do list.
It's a long one. And the master plan, I think, will help a lot.
A lot. It should. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
It's always difficult when it's something you can't do anything about. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see everybody. Just before we leave this topic, I was curious, and I think maybe we should, I don't even know if it's within our scope, but when utility companies or potential future sewer lines get designed for a street, is there something in place that notifies the residents of such street? Like I just learned the other day from just being out in front of my own property on Sawyer Street, that we're going to be getting a new gas line. So it would seem to me, you know, communication is always the best practice. Are the residents of certain streets notified just with a simple letter? Just, you know, hey, you know, just to give you a heads up, your, your street's going to be torn up for a couple of months, a month or two weeks or whatever because of some, you know, infrastructure improvements, be gas, new water line or sewer potentially in the future. Do we do something like that? Does anyone know if, I, I think it would probably be a good idea if it's not in place, that maybe it should be in place?
Tom?
I think the utilities have to tell you if they're going to shut off your service for a while while they're doing this work. I know the town notifies us about hydrant flushing and lawn flushing, but I don't know, I've never seen any organized town notification process for that.
It's great that you raised this, Paul. I wrote down, require the gas company to notify citizens that gas lines will be replaced. And I wrote that as soon as she mentioned what the problem was. So this will be an item that we look at and find out what the rules are. I can't imagine that every place just allows it to happen without anybody and any oversight, because things do go wrong. And it, and the, and certainly in the case of gas lines, the, the individual residents really are at, at risk. I study gas lines and I can assure you that it's quite chaotic. So we'll take this up and see if we can find something about it that can be helpful and maybe we have to do something about it. Okay, well, we're coming up to our last items, which are really business. And let's begin by, we want to, Lauren and Jen would like to have a, an informal conversation about process improvements related to the way in which we work to try to make things smoother and quicker. And, and then we have some administrative work that requires that we accept such things as minutes of previous meetings. So Lauren, do you want to begin?
Sure, thank you. So I will start and then I'll turn it over to Jen for some other ideas here. And I just wanted to first say, thank you all again for your time. I appreciate, I know it's a lot to take on volunteer work and work for, on a committee. So thank you for your time. I look forward to working with all of you and, and learning how we can continue to improve planning functions. I think we, amongst ourselves and with our new chairwoman, we've been discussing sort of process improvements that we can make to make things more effective and efficient and work better for everyone involved. I think part of that is more, you know, effective and strategic communication. We will be amongst the planning staff and Chair will be communicating on a regular basis, checking in regularly. And I think that moving forward in the next couple of weeks, I'd like to touch base with each of you individually so that we can have maybe some one-on-one time with Jen, myself and each of the members to really get a sense of what you, you know, what your interests are, what you, where you're, where we could help you and provide you more information. Because, you know, it's been a year here for me and I've gotten to know you all through the meetings, but it's, it'd be nice to connect offline, really get a sense of how we can help you and support you best. And then moving forward, we will be looking for opportunities, whether it's providing you FAQ documents on how to review certain things, what type of topics that will, will try to focus your attention to just try to streamline these processes. We'll be bringing in more training. Some of you may remember, we had A and R under subdivision control law training with our special counsel a few months ago. I thought that was quite helpful. You know, it's, there's, a lot of these laws can be very dense and, and hard to understand. So it's always helpful to have a refresher. So we'll be looking to do things like that, open meeting law training. And if there's any other topics that come to mind that you all feel that might be a benefit from, we'd appreciate that. And then in terms of goal setting, Jen has some great ideas that she'd like to share with you. So I'll turn it to Jen for a moment so she can speak to you about that.
Hi there. So I was talking, Lauren and I, even though we're remote, wherever we may be, we talk throughout the day. And I know that Lauren and Amy have been talking about various goals of the board. And so I want to suggest, as Clark Brewer has suggested and requested many times, that the board should do some goal setting. And I know that this evening, we got quite a few goals just from the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And although I don't foresee us having our public meetings public at the time, I thought we could possibly discuss mirroring what the Board of Selectmen are doing and they've done the last three years, four years. And that's what they do is they get into a room, there's, it's just the board and staff, and they discuss the goals and they identify four goals. Because, you know, you don't want to try to, I know we want to overachieve all of us, but you identify four goals and you discuss them and you, and you start planning them out. And we could do it at Will Cut Commons. Will Cut Commons is going to be closed for the foreseeable future. So we can do meetings there. And we could sit there, we don't have to be on TV, we could sit in a room, have a meeting. We'd post it, the public wouldn't come. We could actually bring in dinner and go over, we could do it any time of the day. That's the other great thing. We could do it at 5:00. We don't have to do it at 6:30. But we could start planning a date for that in the fall and then make it a year-long goal. So it's just something to put out there. The selectmen are doing theirs.
That's a good idea.
Jen, in, in the past, we, you know, I've tried to put together some goal sessions with the planning board. But is what you're suggesting, individual goals that could be discussed deeply and then become board goals moving forward? So we all kind of are in the boat, rowing together, so to speak?
Exactly. It's, it's a great team building exercise as well. And the Board of Selectmen are having theirs next week. I've been at two of them. It's great. That's how.
Do we have a ropes course while we're doing it?
We could do about anything. I, I mean, I was thinking ping pong.
You want to be tied up, Clark?
Well, no, not, not tied up, but what is that thing that you slide down?
Oh, oh, I know what you mean. You want to do that thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
That's.
It's horrifying. It's horrifying what that is. And so you are all into that idea. I know, I can't, as the chairman, I don't want to go back and forth, but if you're into those, that idea, and I know Clark's talked about it. And then talking to Lauren today about a long list that Amy was suggesting, and I said, this really sounds like goal setting that we should all do as a group and not do it in this format, actually see each other. So that's one of the few things we can do. And we could do it, I would say, we could do it early fall, like I said, and I'll start working on that. So.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so that's great. Tom?
Well, I think you and I talked about this when I first got elected. I asked Amy a question. I said, well, how, how soon before a hearing do you get material from applicants? And I got the answer, it could be anywhere from one week to two days before. And both as a lawyer for applicants and as a member of permitting boards, I know that's the regular course of business you're subjected to whenever the applicant gets your stuff. But for us who have other jobs during the rest of the day, it's tough to be adequately prepared for a meeting. I know that there are some other boards in other towns who are very, very strict at setting a 48-hour deadline before a meeting that they want updates and submissions from an applicant. And they absolutely will not conduct the hearing and will continue it if they don't have it. I don't know if we have to do that. I, I know we have subdivision rules and regulations. I don't know if the planning board has general rules and regulations about all kinds of applications, but, you know, it is something we'd either have to do as a rule and regulation or as a bylaw or probably just a rule. We'd have to have a public hearing about it and publish it and let, you know, give people advance notice of it. But I don't know if that's been a major problem for you, but I know, again, again, Norwell is an example. Their boards can be brutal and Duxbury too. They can be brutal on, if you don't meet their deadline of when the submissions end, you aren't going to be heard.
So I would say that Lauren and Jen have been very good in pushing people to get us information on the 48-hour. The challenge is the following. We are 48 hours.
Do we have a formal 48-hour deadline? That's part of a rule and regulation, because it's not enforceable if it isn't, so.
Jen?
We, I can't speak to a rule or regulation, but we have a very clear set of deadlines that are posted on the website, and we work with every single applicant. It's the same way with the zoning board, particularly if we're going to continue a hearing, we make it very clear how early they have to have that information in, because it needs to be reviewed by the board. I require a week in advance. 48 hours seems to me way too, not enough time. So Lauren and I, I think, are really, really stern with the applicants. And I think we could even be more so, but we've been pulled in a lot of directions in the last few months. But I don't foresee that as a problem, Tom, but I think that it's a good suggestion, and, you know, we'll double check. But I think that mostly, we've been able to get everybody their information pretty well in advance. I think it's, the one issue we had was the delivery, and now we're all working via email, so I think it's better.
So the one thing I would say that I find, well, first off, I would say, we all read for a living, 48 hours is not enough time. So I just put that out there. I feel as if you can't reason through something, because sometimes we have documents that are, you know, 10, 15 pages long. So that's one. Number two, I feel like we are pressed to make decisions at each meeting, and yet we often are having a lot of back and forth, discovering new information, getting more precise about what exactly is being asked of us. And I would recommend that we do not level a final decision after, during a meeting in which we have had serious discussion, because we don't have a chance to reflect on the additive consequence of the discussion of the information that we are presented at the meetings. So I would request that we follow what the ZBA does, which is that they hear a case, they thank you very much, and then they come back with a deliberation generated by one of the members that explains and summarizes the case, and then the decision of what should be made. Because I think we make decisions very rapidly, and my own view is, there's no reason for us to do that. Nobody's going to die. And as long as no one's going to die, I think we should take the time we need in order to really be sure we know what's going to happen.
Excuse me, Amy. I think that's probably, you know, you make a good point, and it's an interesting practice. But on some, you know, ZBA deals with the same kinds of things, sort of over and over and over, with the exception of comprehensive permits. And we have a variety of reviews, and site plan and special permits are kind of bigger. So I definitely agree, closing a public hearing for like a Harbor Hotel project, and maybe deliberating and putting off any decision until the next time would make sense. But for some of these smaller things, it doesn't really, it doesn't really make sense to me.
Well, so what you're saying is, is there's a scale. So if there's a scale, we can establish the parameters of the scale, and we can operate within it.
But in terms of practice, taking a moment to just, you know, on big, big things, make sure that things aren't hurried, as a matter of practice, I think for special permits and site plan reviews, I think your suggestion is a good one.
Okay, so that's, that's something that we're going to talk about. I want to raise, just to inform everyone, well, no, I want to stay on the, let me ask, Jen and Lauren, are you, do you feel like you've had a sufficient time to talk about the process improvements that you're proposing? Are there any others that you wish to discuss?
No, I think that covers it generally for now. I did just also want to touch on, there's been a lot of questions about open meeting law, and I will be getting you more formalized information, but just as a quick rule of thumb for everyone, please don't respond, there should be no back and forth via email with all of the members. Just general rule of thumb is that if there's a member that wants to contact the Chair or whomever, you can, you can either contact the Chair directly, but there should be no back and forth between other members. You can't have a sort of telephone game of conversation. The other safe way is to just send it to me, you can copy the Chair on it, or I will, I will send all the comments received to the Chair no matter what. But we just want to be very careful if you're, you know, particularly sending emails. You'll see that you're typically BCC'd on emails that I send you, because it just nips it in the bud, there's no way for people to respond, to reply. Also, I just want to make sure that everybody's just being really careful and mindful that we're not initiating dialogue over email, because that could be a violation of open meeting law. And public conversations between the board needs to take place in an open meeting.
Let me just recommend that we adopt the policy that the school board uses. And so I've seen it in a couple of other boards, which is that at every email that you start, you put and say, "Do not forward this email." And then it triggers you not to do that. And that's how you can catch yourself from sending something to everyone accidentally, and you get trained very quickly.
Reply all, right?
What?
You mean, don't reply all?
Don't reply all, but if you type in at the top of what you're doing, you won't do it, because you've just told yourself it. Sometimes it's easy to forget.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay. There are other issues that I want to discuss, but I think we've been here long enough, and we've had a couple of tough meetings in the last two weeks. So some of the other issues of process improvements will come up at the next meeting that we have, so be prepared for that. And we're looking for anything anybody thinks could help to make us do a better job, and to make the job easier for everybody that's involved here. So with that, I would like to close the informal discussion on process. Tom?
Is process improvements, will they be written down? Do they have a list of what they are?
You will definitely get, you'll get all of these detailed, so that you'll understand how they work, because we're still working them out. Yeah, yeah. All right. So with that, I'm going to close the discussion of process improvements and move on to administration. Planning Board, do you have specific comments that you have not had a chance to make? I'm going to take that as a no, and I'm going to move on and say that we need to address the question of the Planning Board reorganization, and the Planning Board Member Committee appointments and liaisons. Lauren, do you want to direct that, please?
Certainly. So there are, there are four committees that have designated Planning Board representation. That would be the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. That current seat is held by Paul Colari. We have the Community Preservation Coalition, which is held by Eric Potter. We have the Open Space Recreation Plan, which had been Brian Fraser, he's no longer with us. And then I am pulling a blank on the last one. Jen, do you remember which one it was?
I was like, wasn't it Master Plan?
How could I forget? I spent so much time on it. And the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which is currently held by our Chairwoman, Amy Glassmeyer. So those are the four committees that have formal sort of representation that are appointed. And that's the discussion here. And then in terms of, there's been other discussion about keeping in contact with different committees. We can have an informal discussion on that, but we would look for your organization or vote to whoever would like to be appointed to these seats.
Tom, would you even like to be on CPC plus Open Space?
Yeah, last night at Open Space, I guess we got a belated opinion from Carol St. Pierre, but this was my plan anyway. I have to have you a blessing for it before we submit it to the Selectmen, because they have to do the formal appointment. But I was going to slide over from my citizen's seat on Open Space to the Planning Board seat, because in the two years, I think we saw Brian once.
Yeah, he didn't, he wasn't.
That's fine. So that would, that would free up another citizen in the town to join the Open Space Committee. And then with Open Space, I was going to remain its designee to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, so I'll still be doing that. As far as CPC goes, if nobody else wants to do it, since they don't meet except like in a cluster around town meeting, I don't have a problem with that. I was on the original one when I was a Selectman, when we started the whole thing up.
All right, all right. That's, that's great.
Unless somebody else wants to do it, but I'm gathering from the emails, nobody has, you know, wants to at the time.
Potter was doing it, but he doesn't want to do it.
That's fine. He's got the demands of younger, he's got the demands of young kids that I don't, so that's fine.
All right. So with that, may I see a show of hands that we all would like Tom to serve in those two capacities, please?
You want us to vote? I'll make a motion that we have Tom be the Open Space and CPC Planning Board rep, that Paul Colari be the Affordable Housing Committee rep, and that Amy Glassmeyer be the Master Plan Implementation Committee rep for the Planning Board.
Thank you. Do I see a second?
I second that. Paul Colari.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Tom Callahan? Paul Colari, say your name, please. He's just gotten frozen. That's so funny. Paul Colari, would you say your name and vote?
He's muted.
He's dry.
We just need Eric to go.
Eric, Eric, would you vote, please? Okay, Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right. Thank you very much. We've got that done.
Can I ask a question? Do we have no, do we have no representation of participation with the Harbor Committee?
No formal.
Really?
Yeah, I don't, Clark, would you speak to that? I don't know why that is the case. I wondered about that, although it is difficult, because we have to make such big decisions about it, to have one of us on it would seem maybe too much oversight.
Well, I think, you know, it's been hard enough, like Tom brought up, to get Fraser to go to Open Space, that one more committee assignment just didn't seem like a good idea for a requirement. But during the really interesting parts of what Harriman was doing, I think I was showing up at the Harbor Committee meetings, I think Amy, you were too. So without an official, and I was making comments, so I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, but Lauren, you were going to say something.
I was just going to say that while there is no specific seat on the Harbor Committee for planning, the Board of Selectmen has an appointed liaison to the Harbor Committee. They don't sit on the committee, but they do attend most of, if not all of, the meetings. And there's no, I mean, the meetings are, of course, are all open to the public, it is a committee, but if you wanted to appoint a member to be sort of a liaison, that would just, you know, stay in touch with that, that would be something that you could consider. It would be sort of an informal appointment, then at least one member could be kind of designated and staying in tune at Harbor. I mean, with that said, I also, I work very closely with the Harbor Committee Chair, and I can keep you up to speed on Harbor Committee, but it's just something for you all to consider.
Tom?
Do we need to reappoint whoever our rep is to his own advisory committee? Or is that just, just leave it the way it is?
Lauren?
It was typically always the Chair.
So I have a new job. Thank you.
Good for you.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to serve as an appointed liaison to the Harbor Plan, or the Harbor Committee? Or will, I'm happy to have Lauren be the rapporteur for us, but, no, I don't see, at this moment.
That's a fancy word.
Yeah.
I'm happy to continue. I can, anytime you want an update, I can let you know what's going on with the Harbor Committee.
All right. So let's, Clark?
I'd like to make a motion to approve February 26 and March 4 meeting minutes.
Thank you for that. Can I get a second?
Move me right along.
I'm up for that, too. But I need a, I need a second.
A second.
Say your name, please. Say, Tom Callahan. Eric Potter? Paul Colari?
Madam Chair, do you need me to vote?
Well, we sort of have you vote, because we want you to.
We should have him vote, because Tom was not sitting on those minutes.
And that's why I asked, just because there was, there was two minutes that came in the email that we're voting on, and unfortunately, I printed them out, and I don't have them with me. I was present for one meeting, but not present for another. Jen, do you have them there in front of you? Could you just let me know if this was the meeting? Because what I was present for, I agree with, but I just don't want to vote to approve minutes in a meeting that I wasn't present for. I don't want to.
I don't have it in front of me. I believe that you were, you were, you missed the meeting for H. James Lane, which was the second.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Didn't you miss the meeting for H. James Lane? You didn't hear the opening. You and Eric, I think, missed that. So we'll just take, we'll just take, if everybody could vote on them, and then I'll clean it up. I don't know else to do it. I didn't write them. I wasn't there either.
So if Paul and Amy vote, that's a majority of the Planning Board, if these guys missed a couple of the minutes. It's all right.
Paul Colari, aye.
Okay, Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right. We have approved the minutes for February 26 and March 4, 2020. Our last item is topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Is there any item to be discussed? Tom?
When are we formally going to discuss 508 Jerusalem?
Oh, I'll report on that right now. It's 580, and the project is currently stopped at this moment, and there is an evaluation being done on the site. We will hear more about it at our next meeting.
So just to augment what Amy said, Bob Egan did a stop-work order on the project, and they have, I believe, yet to submit revised documents. They tried to resubmit the crap that they got a permit on. So.
No, I mean, I heard this before I was on this board for a long time. I've experienced it at different things. At some point, we have to take up the perhaps delicate topic of enforcement, and where it's failing.
We can do that. We can put that on an agenda, and.
It's not a high priority at the moment, and I know some of it will come out at 580 discussion, but it is something I think, long-term, we need to discuss.
I agree with that. Lauren?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, to elaborate, that we've spoken with the town manager and the building enforcement officer, Bob Egan and Chris Senior. I flipped that opposite, but we spoke with them, and we've been involved with this staff on this. There's been a cease-work order placed, as Clark and Amy stated. We will be working with a third-party engineer to be reviewing the plans, both the ones that were submitted for the initial building permit, and the plans that we've received right now for large home review. The large home review application has not been filed, and we will not be filing it until we've concluded that, that portion of investigation. And we're also speaking with special counsel on this. So right now, we are holding until we have more information on how we are going to proceed with this. So while we can provide more of an update at the next meeting, we will not be beginning a large home review process in our first August meeting, as we had previously discussed, we are holding on that.
Tom?
Lauren, when you have a chance, can you provide me the date that they submitted their plans?
Yes. Well, there's really two dates, right? There's the first date, then the second information that was, was.
Well, whatever, whatever the date is that they filed incorrect information would be the first date of a violation, because I think I made myself clear at the last meeting. I do think a violation is, has occurred here. I don't think it turns on intent at all. And our bylaws says that each and every day is a different violation. So it's important to know what the starting date of that is. So it would be the first date that incorrect information is submitted to the town.
Lauren, do we recover funds as a result of a violation?
We don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay.
I will find out.
I mean, I think, I think it's written down that we should. Tom?
I mean, it's in the bylaw that we have a fund, and my experience with past fines on other boards was that the money itself, if paid, goes into the general fund, for the use by the town as a whole. It's not for the use of the board specifically, but it goes into the general fund. It's not for the use of the board specifically, but it goes into the general fund.
Right. Well, so we will take this issue up again, and we will, in the meantime, between now and the next time we meet, a couple of things will happen on my part. If I talk to anyone about anything that's not you or Lauren or Jen or somebody in town, I will make it clear to you that I have done that. And I will do that on a weekly basis so that you are familiar with conversations that somebody wants to have with me. And if I have any conversations with anyone in town that has implications for actions that we might be taking in the future, I also will let you know what those conversations are about so that everybody is apprised. And when we have a meeting, if there has been significant activity that we don't have reflected on our agenda because it isn't a part of a piece of business we're doing, but it seems important to be, to make you notified about, I will bring it up in the section where Planning Board Member Comments. So I guess I'm just saying, I'm not going to hold anything that I am knowledgeable about. All right, so our next Planning Board meeting is August 5th, 2020. Lauren, do we have any idea of what that meeting's going to look like right now?
The August 5th meeting, we have primarily dedicated to the continuation of 124 and 87 Elm Street. With that, I also would like to add that we have had an application for an A and R that if the board would be willing, we would put that at the top of the agenda. And then the rest of the meeting would be dedicated to 124 and 87 Elm Street, as we discussed at our last meeting.
So will we get information on the A and R before we have to make a decision?
Absolutely, yes.
And will we get information from the principals on the 123 Elm Street based on conversations, based on questions that were raised at the last meeting and questions that might have been presented by Planning Board members that are to be conveyed to the developer?
Yes, you will get that in advance of the next meeting. We actually, I had a call with our peer review engineer, as well as Eve Tapper today, and they are planning to have some sort of a written set of comments to us by, I believe it's next week? Yes. Hold on, where am I on my calendar? Yes, next week, they plan to have written comments. We will have those distributed to you, as well as the applicant, for them to prepare a response. And then we would state to the applicant that we would need any response or any new information for consideration on the 5th. We would need that by the 29th. That way, we can distribute to you, so you have a week to review.
So prior to the meeting, the very first meeting of the plan review, I submitted fourth items to you, if you remember that. Were those conveyed to the developer?
Just.
For example, I was particularly interested in a geotechnical analysis?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and I have been sharing as well any of the comments that you've been seeing that come from the public. The way I've been doing it is it's chunks of periods of time. So it's been typically every week, the comments that I've received between these two dates. I send those to you, as well as the applicant, so that they can hear what's being said in the public and that they can, you know, know to be addressing this as we move forward in this process.
Okay. Tom, did you want to ask a question?
No, I'm just giving everybody a heads up that I mentioned last week that it helps with a big project like this to organize my thoughts and writing, and particularly in this format. So I'm going to have some comments based off the initial presentation last week and Attorney Rodsky's 13-page letter. So it will cover the whole project and just some of my initial thoughts, and I'll send that to Lauren to distribute to everybody, including the applicant.
All right, at 8:46 PM on the 15th of July, it appears that the Board, the Planning Board of Cohasset, has completed its business. Can I get a motion from someone for us to adjourn the meeting?
No move, Clark Brewer.
May I get a second? Please vote and say your name first and then vote. Aye. Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Paul Colerie, aye.
Great. All right, thank you all very much. Enjoy.